All right, I'm gonna call to order this November 19th Regular Board Work Session.
Can you give me like 10 seconds to get Carla set up before we start the meeting? It's really quick.
Already did it. I already called it to order. I'll hold off on saying anything else.
There was a ray of sunshine today and then the clouds came.
James, are you calling yourself the cloud? Because that's what happened when you came in my office.
Yeah, didn't you see the cloud is parted?
Right, as soon as Sarah's back at her desk, we'll get it going.
Okay, thank you Chair, I'm back.
So, for a call, all directors are in attendance. We have a meeting agenda. Is there any action?
I would move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Chris, seconded by Amanda to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. First up, our action items, policy review first reading. So we are not, I think the goal of this conversation is not to approve these policies. That will happen at our December 3rd meeting. But what I'd like to do is get to sort of resolution on what those policies are going to look like if we can in order to approach that conversation with some predictability. So with that, we have three policies before us. One is recommended for deletion. I think that one is possibly the easiest one. I'd like to tackle these one at a time, IIBG. Policy Committee, do you have any comments about this one?
The recommendation to delete it was it was a bit outdated and technology doesn't stand alone in our system anymore. It's part of what we do.
Okay, Rob and Amanda, anything to offer on that one or, okay. All right, so that one's gonna come forward for deletion. Colleagues on the board, any questions of the committee? Okay, next up, I'd like to jump to JBA, GBN, which is the sexual harassment policy. And I'm gonna ask, because I saw an email exchange between Chris and Lisa, so I was gonna ask Chris if you introduce this and then we'll hear from the committee and figure out how we'll move forward on this. Before I do, just so that the board is aware, we as a district are out of compliance. I think this is a District 22 issue or?
It's a matter of the policy needing to be adopted at the time that OSBA provided it and the first reading that we saw was at the beginning of October. And their recommendation was to move because the legislation had changed the law and now we have the older policy in place until we adopt this. The other thing that I would say is that I did, I, we did see an email and maybe Chris wants to speak to that. But I did look and went back to OSBA specifically speaking to our PACE lawyers around some of the terminology and wanting to be clear that it's not their recommendation to make the changes. And so I just wanted to state that I did look back into it one more, one more time after the email came through.
Policy Committee, I'll start with you, Chris.
Okay, so the email that Lisa's talking about, after we had had our meeting, I went back to the referenced ORSs, the OARs and the Title IX document. And I'd just like to say it was fascinating. I also went to six other districts and looked at their policy, the same policy as well. There were a couple of things that I had found, because I was trying to find two things. I was trying to find where the sentence and the sentence that is in question is on the last page. It's the last sentence above the paragraph leading publication. It's in the no retaliation section and it was about a false statement. And I wanted to check and see where that came from. And it came from the Title IX document and it came from the update that was the May 2020 change. Lisa's shaking her head, that was where it came from. And there were two things that I found there and one of them was that the paragraph leading above and below that talked a lot about that particular section referencing college level student to student activity. There were other places in the Title IX document that talked about some of the Title IX sections didn't apply equally to elementary school or middle school or high school students as they did to college students. So that was one thing I found. In others, I found some of the school districts and the ones I looked at, Salem, Beaverton, Portland, David Douglas, Reynolds. And the only one that had that language in it was Salem and Salem does not use OSBA as their policy writer. They do it themselves with their own attorneys. So on that part of it, I was less inclined to that we needed to keep that statement in. The other part that I would like to ask on behalf of the general information for the group is Mr. Hugh, whether or not, not in related to a sexual harassment, but any, someone stole from me and I made a false statement. Is there a way to address that that we don't have in policy, that it's part of conduct? Same way with a student to student, if they made a false statement, do we have a way, Mr. Cook, to address a student to student without having it be calling something a false statement in this document?
Well, when, if it's between staff to staff and they make an accusation against another staff through your investigation, we have findings and if we find that somebody reported falsely with intent, then we are able to discipline the person based on, you know, our findings. And so we do have a way, if it was through staff to staff, to be able to investigate and then again, if it was proven that somebody maliciously filed a false claim against somebody else, we could render disciplinary actions based on that information.
But that doesn't have to be in the policy for you to be able to do that action. That's considered part of the employee
Correct.
conduct. Okay. And then Mr. Cook, same thing with the student to student.
Very similar. We could, if there's a false statement made or there are policies against that as well, making false statements and kids can get, we can find that in our findings and make decisions about consequences based on that.
Okay. And so then my final part on this is that we do look to OSBA to give us recommendations. They have had their attorneys look at things. That's what we pay for and occasionally there are places where there's, there's some room that we can make an adjustment without harming our district, our students or our employees and the OSBA would err on the side of caution. That's the way lawyers do things. They err on the side of caution. So with all of that, from what I had looked at and after we had our conversation with the committee, it seems like that particular sentence could come out, that it was not going to harm the policy, nor was it going to not allow us to investigate anything that had happened. It would be, it would come up in the course of the regular investigation and not delineating between a false investigation and an accurate or real, whatever word you want to use, but it doesn't take that into a separate category. It just says, we're going to investigate. And that's the end of that. So that's, that's where I was.
Could you, could you direct me to where the false statement references?
So it's on the last page and I don't know what page it is. It's page 11 in our page in our document. It's page eight, eight of nine of the document itself. So on page eight of nine of the policy, there's a paragraph that says no retaliation and there's quite a lengthy paragraph and then there's a sentence that starts with charging an individual with a code of conduct violation for making a material false statement. And that's the statement that is not universally in all of the policies I looked at and seems to be one that we have other ways of addressing that rather than putting it in this policy in a way that makes it a standalone statement.
Okay, Amanda, do you have any further things to?
Nope, I showed up at like the last 10 minutes of that meeting, so I don't have anything to contribute.
Robin?
Amanda, we didn't go over this in the last meeting. This was just, I think, came up based on taking it out of the consent agenda last time and not approving it based on the statement. Yes, I am very supportive of taking that language out. This is one piece of information that our students, you know, are going to be reading when it comes to reporting. And a lot of times in cases of sexual harassment, there's a lot of uncertainty around it and any language that we can take out to center our student experience and make them feel more more supported in coming forward and reporting. I am very supportive of this. And so I do think that this will make this a little bit easier for our students to report.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Matt, I see your mouth moving. I'm not picking up any sound. No, not yet. I do mouth read though. Nope, still not.
About now?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I had to take my microphone speakers out, I'm sorry. Just going back to Lisa's initial comment that OSB is not recommending this to come out or they're agnostic to it or attorneys or?
You know, I think the, so correct, I first talked to the person that is ultimately in charge of just getting this information to us and that was her recommendation. I then went forward and made a request specifically to the attorneys and it was was suggested. And then my only thought, Chris, was I went to the policies that you were looking at as well and what I'm wondering is if they had not been updated on the website by date and maybe you specifically looked at which ones had it or not. My concern is if the old policy did not include that or and the new one did, that that might be one issue as to why it hasn't shown up. But here's what I'll say to your question, Matt, is, and this has happened in the past. If we decide to strike something or remove something and we submit it and it's approved and OSBA is highly concerned, then they return it again for us to to review one more time with that, with that saying that they, that they are recommending not to post it that way.
So are they coming back to us on that second try or?
We haven't done it. We haven't approved it and submitted it for the policy. Yeah.
I just would be interested to know why they, they're concerned about it. But if we're gonna get us, if they're gonna come back and kick it back, then I don't see any harm in taking this out at this point. That's at least my thoughts.
And I think when I did the review, Lisa, I think some of the policies were updated, which was surprising to me. And some were very old and they needed to get their act together and get them updated because I tried to make sure on that as well.
I know, since it, since it changed and I think our first chance to get it on, on our, on our view was October. I just don't know how many really got it on there and done. So, yeah.
But it sounds like we could go ahead and take it out and if OSBA really has heart attack about it, then they would kick it back and say, no, here's why you really need to have it. But let's, let's take it out and then move this one on to consent agenda then.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, I, yeah, I concur with what you just laid out, Chris, and appreciate your diligence and hunting down, hunting down the language. So I, I think what the board would like is to see it stricken, Lisa, if you have, if you get anything back from OSBA, just maybe flag it to Chris and the committee and I'd like to be CC'd on it, but otherwise we'll get, we'll get our.
Yeah, we'll submit it after it's approved. Yeah, we'll submit it after it's improved and we usually hear back relatively soon with.
Good. Oh, so we're gonna see it after the December meeting is when OSBA will review it?
Yes.
Oh, got it. Okay, then. Sounds good. Thank you. All right, our policy is the newest one from the state. With the all students belong policy, ACB. And once again, I'll ask the committee to weigh in in the same order. So, Chris?
So on this one, we had a long conversation about it. We had multiple things because it's a brand new policy just trying to figure out. And so I see that there are some things struck from it that it was a student policy and we didn't reference employees or visitors that that was, was taken out. I'm not quite sure why the paragraph bias incident was removed. The other part, we had been strongly encouraged again by the attorneys and by ODE to not make changes to this. And the only thing, it looks like the all students belong and then to make it easier to find, this was a search mechanism part. If someone was looking up for hate symbols, it would be really hard to find it in this policy because it's not part of the title. It's not really, you'd really have to do a clean search for it. And I doubt that there are a lot of people that are as good in string searches to find this policy. So we were trying to figure out without taking out the title, all students belong, that was ODEs and the committees that work with ODE, not just them as the five member board, but other folks that they talked to and whether or not we could add something underneath a second, like a subtitle prohibition of hate symbols and put that in there. We were encouraged not to add any more symbols to it, that there may be revision later, but that wasn't where they wanted us to go because there was criteria that they were using about what was considered a hate symbol.
substantial disruption to the education.
Right, right. And this is one that we do have to have in place by January 5th, first, January 1st. So, so this is one that we need to have and I admit it's not a perfect one. But it's, it gets us going and there are already some conversations with some board members in other areas of the state that don't agree with a lot of this for a different reason on the other side of the coin. So it's it is an emotional policy, but it's one that needs to be in place.
And on Saturday, Chris, if you want to share that they invited us to fill out a survey and volunteer to be part of that advisory committee. That information is in the OSBA website and the session that was provided where we could learn more about this policy is recorded. If any of us want to watch it again, it's there and yeah, in the link to the survey as well as there.
Okay, Amanda, any? Any thoughts from your end?
No, I wish I could have been part of the conversation for this one, but I do have a question. Why is bias incident struck out? What was that?
Yeah, that was.
That was me, sorry.
What that's about, I'm just curious.
Yeah, and so, you know, overall, like the discussion was, what is the purpose of this? It's like all students belong, but really this is a policy about hate symbols and making sure that this discriminatory language and symbols are not on our campuses. And so, yes, speaking about hate symbols, renaming the policy itself, bias incident and bias incident complaint procedures that's also in there are really inaccurate ways of describing this. These are overt forms of prejudice. These are acts of intimidation and these are, it should be hate symbol reports, right? This isn't like, you know, I'm celebrating Christmas and I'm not acknowledging, you know, that other people have other cultural preferences and practices during this time and I'm exercising my bias. This, these are symbols that are intentionally used to intimidate, to express hate and that have clear defined definitions around it. And so I thought that using bias incidents was, was inappropriate. I had also made the comments about taking out some language around that we are not going to use any, around the disciplinary procedures that that wasn't corrected. It tried, I felt like it tried to minimize it. You know, if we have disciplinary procedures that we are utilizing in our districts, then these need to comply with the disciplinary procedures that are, that we have. I didn't think that it was appropriate that we were kind of like, oh, but we will not discipline if we don't have to. And then I also thought that, that this policy was a bit too limited as it only called out nuisances, swastikas and Confederate flags. But this was a district liability question over student experience. And so we were told that with time that we could expand it. We just want to see how this is going. We want to have a pilot program. But I do think that this policy would be more effective if we had a list or if we could refer students to a resource to, to support them and saying, okay, this is a hate symbol so that they can report it.
Awesome. Thank you for clearing that up. Yeah, I do agree, discipline, disciplinary actions should absolutely be done. Just an anecdote, I remember when I was in seventh grade, eighth grade in middle school, there was a kid, he had a swastika in his locker and nobody did anything about it just because nobody on campus wanted to talk or have that conversation. So I think it's really important that we do put disciplinary issues or measures in there. So.
So what, so that's kind of a question that if you don't mind, Blake, for Mr. Cook. So what are non-disciplinary remedial actions? What, what does that generally apply to in other situations?
Repeat the phrase for me one more time.
So what is it? So it says the district will use non-disciplinary remedial action whenever appropriate. So what does that look like?
There are times when adolescents or adolescents and children or children where learning needs to happen. So instead of a detention, things like that, which may not teach what needs to be taught, then you have that other option and we're gonna have this conversation, we're gonna call your mom and dad, we're gonna do these other things and you use it as a teachable moment and try to get changed that way. So that would be one example. Often that works.
Is, is restorative justice the other part of that? Is that?
Yep.
And practices.
And I'm 100% supportive of restorative justice and non-disciplinary remedial action. However, I do think that this is very, that these are very strong offenses. And that by putting that in there, it really diminishes the importance of this. It really trivializes it and minimizes this experience of somebody putting up a swastika, putting up a news, putting up a Confederate flag because we are talking about those three things that we all know that those are death threats and news is a death threat. And to say, you know, to minimize it by being like, well, we're not going to, to use our standard disciplinary procedures, that this is our first line of action. I don't think that's appropriate.
You'll get no disagreement from me, but to add to what my answer was before, I can give you a direct example of a student experiencing autism, adolescent at the high school. His social understanding was a challenge. He was attracted to things like this. His family didn't support it. It was part of his disability. And we needed to work through that socialization piece with him and it took six, seven months to really do that. I wouldn't want to put us in a position to where we're punishing a student experiencing those kind of challenges where the student wouldn't have a full understanding of the actions or what it means.
That though, that's already, you know, clarified within our disciplinary practices, right? Whether you're bullying and somebody doesn't understand that they're harassing somebody. I would think that like if our practices are restorative and that, that's how we treat all of our students, then we wouldn't have to call that out here particularly. And that's where I see the difference between, you know, bullying harassment. It's the same thing. This is bullying harassment, but it's using hate symbols to do that. But we don't use that language in our bullying and harassment policy. But yeah, as it pertains to these prejudice symbols, racist symbols, then all of a sudden it's just like, oh, that's the first thing that we, we jump to. I should hope in all of our practices, definitely, I'm all for restorative. We should always do that first. But by particularly within this policy calling it out, it doesn't seem fair at all.
I would jump in and I, Robin, that was my, my thought as well. If, if our other policies aren't clarifying that and yet we, we can have confidence in restorative disciplinary practices, then, then I, I would agree. It's kind of a a bit of a flag. I guess my, my over. Yeah, anyway, go ahead, Lisa.
I was just gonna say, the other thing to keep in mind that we're aware is that this was something that was worked on through the summer and they're asking for it to be adopted. However, the, the, we were talking about procedures. This is the policy and then the procedures, the rules and others will follow. And I think there will very likely be an AR or other things that will continue to be added. So a list could be within that or it could be discussed later because I do know that when, when it was presented to us, it was the urgency. And then there was also, oh, we have not completed the rules or the, or the, you know, the procedures. Something also to keep in mind when we do receive our policy updates, this is the policy update guideline that came with it. There are two things I just wanted to point out. It said, the rules allowed adding the, and it says right on the policy that there are rules that allow adding to the list of prohibited symbols, but we strongly recommend consulting legal counsel before doing so. So when we did say, could we consider that? They said at this time, we do not recommend that for that reason. The second is the rule also defines a bias incident as and requires related procedures and requirements. Sort of like what we're saying is we need to go into those related procedures and requirements later. Because these requirements are unique to bias incidents, there is a separate complaint procedure. If considering incorporating bias incident, incidents into other complaint procedures, please work closely with legal counsel. So they're asking for that to be in the policy and if we are going to add it or make it, you know, because you were saying, looking at other policies, then we would want to bring those policies forward to our counsel as well.
Okay. To just try to find the path forward. So we have, I'm hearing two stated issues, one presumed future issue, and I heard that from Robin of this not being an exhaustive list of hate symbols. And what I was hearing from you, Robin, was you'd like to see in the complaint procedure some some reporting criteria or some, some reporting process for prospective hate symbols that aren't included in this policy. Is that, is that a reasonable representation?
Well, like if we, if we could get like a, there's other nonprofits, you know, there's like a center for hate and racism and they have a list of hate symbols. If we could partner and say, you know, I, as identified by this, you know, legal organization so that people will have a reference to use. I thought that would be useful rather than reporting, seeing like additional resources for, for kids to understand, well, is this hate or is this you know, some other symbol?
And Blake, if I could go back to the disciplinary section, can that sentence just be reworded? The district will use appropriate disciplinary remedial action as necessary. So that way you're not calling out non-disciplinary. You're just saying it'll be reviewed. So a kindergartner maybe is not going to get the same punishment that a senior or someone that absolutely knows what they were intending to do versus someone who thought it would be a funny joke. And neither is appropriate, but if we just kind of reword that sentence so that it says, yes, there will be consequences and it will fall in line with, with other student conduct. Whether it's restorative justice, whether or not it's something else that, that requires more discipline.
I I'm happy with that. I'm I'm also in deferential mode where I'm just trying to get this. Push forward as even an imperfect policy, but I I'm happy with that. Adjustment, uh, Catrice, I saw your finger go up. The the good one.
Sorry, um, I I, and I hear everything everyone is saying and and I do appreciate the input in the that information. I'm just very hesitant to say make any tweaks to it because of legal recommendations for us as well. And the things that we need to change can be done in our ARs, which which is what really what applies um, at the school level. Um, the policy is a policy, but we take the policies and make ARs, which are the regulations of how we operate. Um, and that's where those things will count. I'm just very hesitant to change anything um, in this in this policy because of the. Numerous times we've been reminded as superintendents, please discourage any changes to this policy. So I'm. Teetering on both sides, I totally understand. I totally understand that the ask. Um, I really do, but again, I think there's a different way to take care of that and that's through our ARs. Which really are applicable at the school level, not necessarily the overall policy itself.
And I think that's where it would be important for any of us who do have suggestions for changes to this policy, to volunteer to be in that advisory committee. Um, and that was made very clear on Saturday at the information session about that policy. So so it, I mean, I I recommend the recording because it was it was very informative. I was glad I watched it. Or joined.
And the two parts that they did say that we could um, easily strike are back in the very beginning. That talk about all students are entitled and then it talks about all employees and all visitors. Those are struck. Um, those are not required. And I think let's keep it student centered right now.
And I just want to point out again, like my values when I'm looking at these policies, I am going to center students. And I'm going to consider most vulnerable students. That's one of um, our values that we state before every meeting. I know that the district has certain liabilities that it assumes by updating and changing policies. But again, when I'm looking at these policies, I am looking at the impact on our students first and foremost and. And um, I I do, there are liability issues. And I under recommendations coming and their student focused and centered and folks and focused on uh, the most vulnerable.
Okay, um, I I think in the interest of. So this policy is going to come before us in December and we have to a approve whatever version we we have in effect. Or be out of compliance with what the state is saying. I uh, I hear that advisement, Dr. Pura. I'm. Uh, again, trying to discern the will of the board here. Um, I'm 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 happy to see it move forward. I think it's a huge step forward for our. Um, our state to make a statement like this and I'm grateful that folks advocated this way. I uh, I also do hear the concerns presented by the committee and individual committee members. Um, of of highlighting which ways this policy is perhaps imperfect. I uh, I'm going to go down the list one more time. Uh, to identify what issues because I don't want to have to rehash them in December. Um, and kind of get uh, one more last uh, vehicle for comments and then uh. We'll we'll try to come to some level of resolution. So the first one has to do with the title. All students belong. Um, I Chris talked about how this is not a searchable format. Um, most community members aren't looking for all students belong. They're looking for hate symbols. Uh, I took that ed advisement really well. I think that was smart of the committee to to bring that forward. Is there any concern over potentially having some hybrid title or a subtitle or anything that would make this document? More searchable.
This man, I just think that uh, if you're gonna, I'm no problem with the subtitle uh, personally. Uh, but it should be prohibition of symbols of hate because that's how it's worded in the document itself.
Okay, I'm seeing general head nods. That doesn't mean anything, but uh, any anybody want to rebut Matt's statement there? Uh, there's a chance for fiery debate. Okay, Lisa, um, did you catch that? Prohibition of symbols of hate. We we'd like to include that in the title when we see it in December. Okay, um. Those two employees and visitors stricken. I have no issues with that. Any board members have any concerns with? Those strike. Okay, we're going to move forward. Bias incident, uh, Director Stowers had a concern over the use of bias incident being as these are more. Um, the symbols that are specifically referenced by this policy are not evidences of bias, but evidences of um, intimidation. I I didn't hear any level of consensus. Was that the consensus of the committee?
Sure what we would put in its place then, since that is um. Really kind of at the meat of what the um, the ODE committee had done. So I'm not sure. What else we would do in that.
Well, and and that last paragraph or the last sentence in that paragraph, uh, bias incidence is actually defined. And so that's your whole, you'd have to change that word as well. Uh, and I think isn't wherever this is, you said this ODE came up with this. So then we're changing the verbiage of ODE. And I don't think I'm comfortable with that. Again, as Myra indicated, there's opportunity and on Saturday for uh, some discussion uh, for future updates. And that would be a good forum for that.
And this is the definition that the entire state is using. So I think for this, for ODE and for us, for for the districts. It's, I think it's very important for us to have common definitions. And this is the one that ODE is currently using. So until. That advisory committee decides to change anything, I don't think we should change it either.
Okay, other thoughts?
I think this would be a good opportunity that we could use to be to lead by example. And to make a statement that this isn't bias incident, this isn't jokes, this isn't something. Trivial that that this is real and that we take it seriously. And that students and parents or anybody that engages in this behavior, that we are going to take it seriously, act seriously. And it's not going to be misconstrued as oops, I didn't know what I was doing.
Um, Dr. Per, I see your hand. I wanted to see if Carla or Amanda. Have any comments to make. Carla, no.
Overall, I do agree. I'm not particularly happy with it either, but I also do see the uh, the timeline that we're under. So I mean, this is kind of just part of working in government, I guess, just kind of meeting that deadline and going back to it. I would love to go back to it. Um, actually, it wasn't part of the conversation when we first had this and I really would have liked to have been part of it, but um. Yeah, we can just bring it up another time. That'd be great.
Well, and we can, and you can join the advisory committee or fill out the the survey because I know time is is a vessel. So. You can fill out the survey and provide that that feedback.
Where is it? Like, is it?
OD, it's in the OD website, um, OSBA, uh, sorry, not OD, OD, the OSBA website for the conference that that we had on Saturday. Um, the all the recordings are there, the links to the surveys are there and to sign up to be in the advisory committee is there.
Okay, dope. Thank you.
That that's an OSBA advisory committee, Myra.
Um, it was. Invited people to join the advisory. OSBA uh, session on Saturday.
Okay, um, Carla, Edna, Colin, Dr. Pereira, like to hear.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, again revisit that piece about the employees and visitors. We do have visitors that come to our buildings. We in. One of the things with OSAA with the athletic such as these are put in there because of things that were happening at. At events at schools, uh, so that protects employees and that also protects visitors to our campuses. So that's why those in there. And I understand that we're student about the students, but these two were put in because of those reasons. Um, and so without that, they have no leverage at a game to say you can't have that on, if you will. If it's or if there's something that's being projected towards a, an adult visitor. I mean, those things are in there because of those reasons, as I understand it.
A a question about that, though, if if they're at. A high school game that there are students present, then it seems like that becomes then our. Our baseline, that it's our students and peripherally that includes people who come to it. And I and I get where you're saying that, but I I I wanted us to try and keep it focused so that we wouldn't get to. Where would we draw the line then? Because we don't want these things. And I understand where the Confederate flag may be flown. But if we start with students have the right to have that, then you can file the complaint because it was shown in front of students. If that works, um.
True, but we we've had some issues that are at our athletic events. Um, and I think every administrator on this call can tell you that we've had a lot of incidents with adults. Um, and it's not just about kids um, as well. And so again, we have an obligation to those visitors who come to our buildings. Um, as well as um, any adults that are there present for the game. Um, and beyond, I see a lot of those complaints that come through uh, from different districts. It's quite embarrassing to see them to come from our own, our district. So again, I. I am not saying what you do is what you do. I'm just sharing with you why I I I understand those two things were put in there. And being on OSAA board and having to deal with a lot of those things. I I see this as leverage for a school to be able to do what they need to do uh, to ban up uh, someone from a game or whatever it is.
So if the district prohibits the use of it at any of our events, then again, does it have to call out? All employees, all visitors, if we say the district prohibits the use, display grounds, district, school sponsor program, service activity. It's it's in the paragraph that says, no, it it doesn't matter who's there. That this is not acceptable. This is not our policy.
Got it. I just letting you know why I understand why these two were put in there. That's that's where I'm coming from with it. Again, I'm not arguing whether it should be there or not, but I'm sharing with you why the uh, the justification or rationale for putting those two. In this particular um, policy, so.
Thank you for sharing that. I think it's really helpful and I do think that, you know, upon hearing that and seeing what the issues are, that that does sound like it's something that's useful to stay in.
I would agree with that. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, our um, superintendent's compelling speech just reversed course on on that, on those two statements, which I think is excellent. That's a, I just want to make sure the board has a chance to weigh in if anybody is in disagreement with what the superintendent shared and. And what now sounds like the committee is advising. No? Okay, then let's keep those statements in. Thank you. I'm uh. Robin, I think your your statement is really well taken. Um, helps me understand how. Um, a phrase that I don't know the intricacy of um, can be misleading with bias incident. What I'm hearing from the board is just a general spirit of let's pass this through. I would encourage the board to. Um, board members to get on that ODE committee to make the improvements at that level. In fact, I'd ask Myra or or Sarah if you already have the link to share it.
Yeah, I'm actually, I was just texting it to Amanda, but you need to log in. You have to use your, so uh, yeah, I was just texting it to you.
Okay. Um, if you could provide kind of a a step by step possibly to Sarah to distribute um, to the board.
Okay.
That'd be super helpful. And I, Lisa, I'm, I I think we'll keep bias incident as it is for the December meeting. Um, and and the board can uh, we can deal with it at that point. Uh, the next would be the or the last part that was broad. No, we've got two more. One is um. The uh, list of hate speech. Hate symbols. Um, Robin, I I heard you share uh, possibly broadening that list through an alliance with some or or reference to. Another, a third party's list of of hate symbols. Um, wanted to kind of open the floor to the board to uh, for any comments on this point.
Well, it sounds like we don't want to, or not we, I should say, uh, the district's position is that we should not broaden that at this point. Uh, just from a legal standpoint and based upon uh, what we're hearing earlier from legal representation on the policy. That we should not. So that's where my stance is. I don't think at this time we should broaden it. I think the discussion later on would be, it would be useful as well. Like the bias incident uh, conversation.
Are there any other comments from from the board on that point? Um, one, one comment I heard from Robin and I just encourage the district leadership and the board is welcome to shoot me down on this one if you'd like. As you approach the AR, is that a prepackaged AR that's going to come to you?
I'm assuming that it will, but it probably is going to stem from the conversations. That OSBA and ODE are are bringing forward with this committee. I'm I'm certain that the rule and the regulation will be coming from more of, because this, even this policy. Came from a group of people working on it, so.
I mean.
It will come from them, yes.
Okay, I mean, my my advice, and I think I'm. Um, I think the voice in my head right now is Robin's, um, but maybe it's not. I would um. Some level of hate symbol reporting or a complaint procedure be of great value to the district in particular. That's my position. The reason being hate symbols, um, first off are often locally or geographically. Significant even within our state, um, and and unique within our state. And I think also um. Some of the lack of awareness, there is lack of awareness as it relates to hate symbols. And uh, a Confederate flag, for instance, and which is stated and well should be. Um, a Confederate flag in Virginia means something different to many people who might. Wear it on a T-shirt or something in Oregon. At the heart of it is a discussion that we have to have. And that's what I I want to make sure that we draw that discussion out so that we can see what local influences are. Disrupting students' education in our in our district. I don't know if I'm making a ton of sense, but um, I think. Leveraging that AR to have important conversations and giving us some insight into what. How how do people see this stuff? Because um. You know, I know not all of us see everything in this discussion the same. But I think we're all on board that these three symbols absolutely shouldn't have no place in our schools. I would imagine that we could probably land on a few more that maybe shouldn't be in our schools too. Uh, but I think there's a wide berth of in of interpretation of what those symbols mean. And we need to be able to have that community conversation. And the only way to do that is to hear what symbols are are. Hurting people and intimidating people. So if any way that that can get into an AR or a process would, that would be my. Advice or hope. Does that work? Okay, um, next up is the disciplinary matter. Director Howard or Chris, Robin, um, Amanda, I think you are on board. So basically, the whole committee is coming forward with the thought that maybe. Um, highlighting that this disciplinary. In effect, disciplinary action, non-action is that that odd disclaimer. Um, dealing with that matter, sounds like the committee is advising against having it, um, even.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah, and it it kind of, that's the one, a couple of things that sound like when the committee of ODE that was working on this as well as the other folks. Um, that felt like something that they didn't realize that we have seventy-five other policies that. Have components of discipline or not discipline and we don't call it out in everyone. And so it just felt like a sentence they put in. That I don't think we need to because we have. We have disciplined student conduct and um, and so putting that in there. We would give leeway to the cabinet member and the principal and the teachers to work with the students in the. we would give leeway to the cabinet member and the principal and the teachers to work with the students in the event. But to not call out non-disciplinary remedial, I get where they were coming from, but it seems
Any other thoughts from the board? I take that as, as a, us concurring with the committee on that one, Dr. Prayer and Lisa. I, I'd like to see. I, I think the board's going to be looking for a revised statement on that point at the December meeting. And Chris, I believe you proposed an alternative language. We wanted to start with that. Do you, do you recall what that was?
Yeah, let me get back to the sentence again, but it was just rearranging the words a little bit. I think, I think I saw Mr. Cook kind of writing some of that down. I'm going to put him on the spot and say that, but it was just, the district will reuse appropriate remedial action or, or use disciplinary remedial action as appropriate, but just take out the non-disciplinary that you'll use whatever remedial action. And Sarah's got it on tape. So Sarah has it too. But yeah, it was just kind of rearranging that sentence. The district will use appropriate disciplinary and or remedial action.
So i- in summary, the title is changing and that statement is changing. The rest of the policy is going to come forward as, as O D presented it. But I, I really do want to thank the committee for doing some hard work behind this. Even acknowledging that a lot of your great advice is not going to come before the board in December. I know that it will have an effect on, on this policy going forward.
And one of the things I think has come up regarding some of, of the other policies, but as the A Rs come out, Lisa, if you would kind of make a little flag that I'm really curious to know how many of these responses, reports will get. And so whether or not that's be something in the A R or how that would work, Dr. Pereira, on just a summary of how are kids doing? How are they feeling about reporting it? And, and what's been the response to that?
Okay. With that, we're going to move past policy review and we'll see that again in December. Next up for action item is School Improvement Act, S I A grant approval. Lisa, this has your name on it.
Thank you, Chair Peterson and Board. I have just a, a, an informational item that has been included tonight around the continuous improvement plan. And what we want to share with you, and I, I guess I will be sharing my screen is that, Sarah, is that the easiest way to do this? I'm sorry to interrupt and ask.
Just to clarify, this is the School Improvement Act grant approval. Is that right? Are we talking the same? Because the next one is the District Continuous Improvement Plan update.
Oh, I'm sorry. I take it back. Okay. So I'm sorry. Yes, we're, we're doing the S I A first. Okay. My apologies. I have it out of order. Yes, we are giving just a compliance. We're part of the compliance for O D E is that, as you recall, all last spring and then submitted in June was our student improvement fund and the S I A dollars. What, what occurs is that there was a reduction to our nine million of the, of the nine million, and it is ended up being just a little under two million dollars. And when the grant approval came, because we were approved, it comes back. And this is just a reminder to the board that not only is that needing to be posted, but it also needs to be signed and sent back with approval through the board in a public meeting. And then, then the funds will be dispersed. So we're in that process of just finalizing the grant dollars to give you an update as to how much money. And just also for you to be aware that there is not a requirement from O D E to make any grant changes. Yes, we did spend to the nine million dollars and we will only have slightly less than two million. But we move forward with the funding being approved by the board and, and then move into having the possibilities of receiving the funds.
Okay. All right. This is the first reading. Got it.
You're right. And so really all that you're seeing that is attached is the, the, the school investment account grant authorization. And so we're just submitting that to you for approval. It will be at the public meeting and it is the, the portion of this funds that just goes directly to the K twelve school, this, the, the school districts themselves.
And so basically we have to do this so that we can get the money. This is all the legal, legal mumbo jumbo that says we promised to spend it in the way that we said we were going to and report back how we spent it so that they'll give it to us.
Exactly. Right.
And there's nothing that we would need to change on here. This isn't the plan. This is what we would, how the parameters of how we would work with the money once we get it.
Correct. And in, in the spring, when we submitted it, the grant was submitted to you along with the intent, the intent and the budget. And this is just the, the final and last step for that to be dispersed to our district.
So it says the grant amount is two million nine hundred seventy-seven thousand seven hundred sixteen dollars and sixteen cents. Is that the amount that we're getting?
Well, my understanding, well, and Jordan, maybe you want to step in because today I, I received the email of that it's a different amount, which was my one million nine hundred thousand.
And so there's, there's a new amount. And did you say that we, we already had a plan to spend nine million dollars? And we're still spending nine million dollars and this is just going to reimburse us for some of the programming?
No. And again, Jordan can speak to this, but last spring, when we knew that we were going to receive this grant, the decision was made from the district and also the board was aware that we were not going to incorporate this into the general fund, nor were we going to spend it until we received it. So we haven't spent any of the money on any of the planning. And once we are, once we receive the funds, then that will be the amount that is spent. We are not spending the, the plan of the nine million dollars. No.
And this is for students' mental health or behavioral health needs. We, when I looked at the exhibits and what the goals were, they were very broad, but it didn't really have very clear deliverables of what we're spending the money on. It's like, oh, students will be healthier and happier and achieve better, right? Talked about student achievement more. But do we have a plan about that two million dollars, what we're doing with it? Or are we just?
Correct. That plan was worked on all last year and then submitted to the board and was approved in last May, June. And it had the specifics around the how we're helping our most vulnerable populations, how we were improving our mental health supports, how we were incorporating multi-tiered systems of support for not just academics, but also for social, emotional and, and mental wellbeing. And the, and the, the, the grant was actually about forty pages of, of research and utilizing what our community was a- a- actually asking for. We had a lot of input from the community as to what would really meet the needs of their, their stu-, the, the students that were asked, the parents and the community around everyone that was involved.
Just as a recap, as I recall it, and if I'm off on any details, let me know. But February, at our strategic planning meeting, is when we saw the bulk of the, of the prospective plan. At that point, there was still some community engagement to be had, but that community engagement was driven by the state as well. I would like to think we would have done it anyway, but there were state requirements around that engagement for, I think, eight special populations or special groups that were called out. I might be wrong, but that was in the, because this is all the corporate activity tax funded Student Success Act stuff.
Right. And, and a lot of that go back even a year prior to that, where there were forums and town halls that were held throughout the state with legislators that were on the committees. There were students that were specifically requested to come. There were some board members involved and a lot of conversation about what would change if this money was available. And one of the things as board members we talked about was not having the legislation come and say, you will have a class size of twenty-four, four kids, even if that was not what would be the best thing for us to do, gave that flexibility along with having the student voice, the parent voice, the community. It was quite a long process that they went throughout the state. They didn't just hit the I five corridor either. They made sure that they went a lot of places. And so that was a year prior before they came up with some of this. And so they, they wanted to give us that flexibility of how each district would use it within the framework of making sure that it fits certain classes of, of type of activity, but not prescriptive down to exact numbers of what you had to use it for.
So I want to.
Sorry. I wanted to just correct myself. I apologize. The grant that you are seeing is actually the funding. And, and so in my mind, it was decreased so much that from nine million, I was like, oh, it's slightly under two. You are absolutely correct, Robin. It is slightly under three. It's the two million, it's the two million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixteen and sixteen cents. And, and so I just wanted to just state that.
I, and I just wanted to emphasize that this is not the part of the process where O D E is asking us to engage the community on what we'll do with these funds. We did that last spring. The board approved that plan. This is, this is actually unusual for O D. Normally we do that first step and then we're done from there. The person who is in charge of the Student Success Act at O D E, the person who was hired for that, decided that they would like a step where the board formally acknowledges the intent to utilize these funds, which is that's, that's all we'll be bringing to you on December third is the grant agreement itself. And it's, it's just the, the district agreeing to accept the funds.
That's, that's helpful background. That nine million got shaved to three million because of anticipated revenue losses for the state, right? So it's making the state school fund whole. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, part, part of it is going to the state school fund to make the state school fund whole. The other thing too, the nine million that was originally discussed is a biennial appropriation and this is a single year appropriation. So yes, it did get reduced. It got reduced much less than we expected. We, we had anticipated roughly four and a half million this year. And, and of course it's going to come in just under three, but the, but the state school fund was kept whole by utilizing some of the corporate activities tax for that purpose.
Yeah. Year or when is the next application process or is it just all done? Money's?
No, as far as I understand, and Lisa would probably be a better person to speak to this, but one of the kind of core intentions of this revenue reform was a continuous process with our communities. And so this, this will be every year, we will go through a similar engagement process to the one that we did this year. It may not be quite as robust, but it'll be similar.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. So we'll see this in December. Lisa, what, would you have a time estimate for District Continuous Improvement Plan update?
Do I have a time as how?
Yeah. Do, do you expect of?
I, the, the purpose is to just explain what the continuous improvement plan is and the next steps in it for it to be approved in the December meeting. So I would say less than ten minutes. But I am also doing this so those that were not on the board or knew have an understanding of the continuous improvement plan. So it's not confused with the S I A grant or, and how they, they work together.
Well, my, board, do we, do we want to recess before information items? Or do we want to power? We don't have a recess on the agenda.
I want to power through for you.
Power through. Okay. So spoken. All right. Lisa, District Continuous Improvement Plan update.
Thanks. All right. Thanks. I, now I'm thinking I will be able to share the screen and go through if, if at all possible. And I am sharing it, so I will present it.
Chair Peterson interrupted just a moment. Just as Lisa's bringing that up, I just wanted to remind the board as well, and I'm sure Lisa will cover this, that although we have a continuous improvement plan at district-wide, every school has one as well that is aligned with what we have. So, and you'll see that down the road here, but I just wanted to put that out there as well for those who are new. So there's one for the district, but each school has their own that's aligned with this that you'll get privy to as well throughout the year.
Thank you. So just, just a reminder that this is a continual process. It is a flow of year to year and on a three-year basis. And it does work from the board's mission, vision and goals, along with our portrait of graduate that Gresham Barilo School District looks to as our output. And it, this does work with any of the grants and the fundings that we do receive from federal and state programs. So just a reminder of our out, our outcomes are really around our graduates being prepared in our ever-changing global community. And our continuous improvement plan does follow our learning our learning model as well as the work of, of utilizing our grants and supports around this as we are looking at utilizing our budget. So these are the four areas of our continuous improvement plan. They have been detailed out in what these mean to Gresham Barlow School District, down to what we see in the classrooms. And then we have focused on these specific areas that will target our improvement and growth and support our strategies. So just to quickly remind people that in the end of December is when O D E is asking us to finalize our district continuous improvement plan. That we want to explain the process. Then the process is all about in, engaging in continuous improvement work for obviously outcomes for our students. And the way that we work with our continuous improvement process is that we want to find out in root cause analysis, what we need to work on and what we need to change. We have established a process utilizing O D E's guidelines to engage stakeholders to affect this change. We continue to do that as we have had our key communicators. We have our core key community partners that we are soliciting and also using thought exchange quite often with our public meetings that we, and we had one just last night. So those are the things that we are asking our community to provide input and having two-way communication. So then what we are asking of our community, we can place into our continuous improvement plan to ensure that growth. We also leverage our practices to implement a plan. And that's why we do just this, that we, we have said these are our leverage areas. We want to make sure that we are updating them, especially in this specific year. If we look at these, we know that social emotional learning is always been part of our plan, but now it is an equal and it even trumps much of that, including our relationships and our safe and caring environment certainly have taken on a new meeting. And so you will see a, a variety of changes from last year to this year because those, those areas have been newly defined, defined because of COVID. We also use data to monitor and make timely adjustments. That's our multi-tiered systems of support where we had brought in panorama to look at attendance, look at our improvements in, in discipline. to look at attendance, look at our improvements in in discipline and referral, and then also in our academics. And although our data has changed with not all of our assessments being equal this year, our graduation rates are come in and we look at our our A to Fs. We look at how we've done proficiently C wise on our internal assessments versus waiting for the states that we did not have last year. Here's an example of of how we go through this process every year, yet we build upon year after year on a three-year plan. And we started with last year's plans being the first is that we have set the direction. We follow the boards and then we continue our needs assessment, looking at our data. We have created the strategic plan. We build upon it and then we monitor and adjust based on those assessments. Here is the process that we are part of. It's remember, it's a high needs assessment. It's a robust review. We analyze our data and we engage our stakeholders. We also have always an ambitious priority-driven action plan on the front of our continuous improvement plan always shows our ambitious goals and our targets that we would like to reach as a district. And the way that we do that is reach it by each individual school. And as Dr. Pereira was speaking is that we look and we are reviewing those school improvement plans now, and you will have an update in the new year as to how everyone is working individually in their schools. So we have our strong collective agency in our continuous improvement plan for the district. And then we continue our routine collaboration around how we have conversations with our schools, how we have conversations with our different departments to ensure that we're making progress. And these are some of the things that the leadership does with the continuous improvement plan and the school improvement plan. So there's the SIP in the SIP that ones a C and ones an S. So we establish those goals. We continue to look for evidence of progress. We engage in our collaborative learning and problem solving. We do deploy different strategies and make adjustments. We do that right down into the the classroom. We know our teachers do that every day. We do the same with our strategies and then we make sure that we have loops to come back and communicate and and make changes. We'll continue to work with updating our school boards, our represented community input. And and then, of course, we share with the state as well. The next steps are that we are right now, we're reviewing what this process is quickly about. And to give you an update of yes, we continue to work on our continuous improvement plan. We would like to present it in the next board session, December 3rd for approval at a business meeting. Then we present it. Then we will continue on with the school improvement planning and present that to you school by school in the new year. And then finally, once approved, we submit the updated version to ODE and then we post to our website. So that's the quick, what is the continuous improvement process? What is the continuous improvement plan that districts work with their with their goals and their targets and how that aligns with every individual school improvement plan? Any questions around this?
Any questions from the board?
All right, we look forward to presenting it next month with the updates to all of the things we've been working on. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Next up, information item is a key performance indicators update and Tim Collins.
All right, Sarah, do you want me to present? Do you want to put up the presentation? What's going to work best on this one?
If you could present, that would work best. I can still take notes while you're presenting.
I can do that. Let me see about getting that up. Just a second. I'm fighting with my screen here just a second.
Well, Tim is fighting. I'll just preface with as a district, we're always looking at a variety of different data points in order to chart our progress. We feel like the one we have here will be able to front face for our public was what Tim is going to present. If you recall back last August, we began this process and another update came in February and then this past August as well. And this is another touch point before we kick live go live here, since we didn't have any data from the spring.
Yes, and I'll I'll keep it in this presentation mode right now, just kind of walking through the slides that are here. You guys have a copy of this, I believe, in your board packet. As you go through and I'll highlight this with the presentation itself, the links starting from slide four on down are actually all live to actual webpages themselves. So our goal really, as Lisa was talking about, the continuous improvement plan has been to find a way to put the information and the data in front of our constituents in a way that's understandable, in a way that's readable. And also as a way to hold ourselves accountable to the goals that we've set. So Lisa already talked about our learning model and the various elements of that. She also talked about the fact that we're monitoring key performance indicators as a part of our improvement plan. Namely, we're looking at attendance. We're looking at state test scores, which Lisa already mentioned, we don't have from this past spring. We're looking at ninth grade on track to graduate and we're looking at graduation rates by and large as some of the major indicators that are indicating how we're doing in terms of servicing our students. So with that, this is a picture of the webpage itself. If you were to click on the link, it would actually take you directly to the page that you're seeing there on that particular slide. I'm right now in the process of working with IT to figure out a way to make this more visible and a way to find it easier. So right now it's hard to find, but it is live and up and ready to go. People can access this if they know where to find it. So a couple of things on this page, I'm just going to walk you down through the page from top to bottom, so you can see what's there. And then as you have time, you're welcome to play around with the different visuals that have been placed on that page itself. So the page opens up with just a couple of things related to how to navigate the page specifically, dealing with both with filters and also some navigation pieces with the visuals that are specific and unique to the way Google Studio presents its data. Also reminding people as they're looking at these, there's a little bit of a lag because some of the data files that it pulls from are rather large in terms of the content that's sitting behind the visuals itself. If you're to keep scrolling down the page, what you'd see are nine or six different boxes. And those boxes go back and relate to the different key performance indicators within the continuous improvement plan. The first one, if you go simply down and then left to right is a page of our demographics. So if people wanted to know who we are and the students that we serve, the visualization itself, if you're to expand or blow that up, our current enrollment, and this was as of a week ago, is 10,493 students. If you wanted to filter down by school specifically and see what individual schools have as far as their enrollment is concerned, also broken down with the different demographics, you'd be free to do so. On this particular page as well, we also have a comparison to last year. So those that are interested to compare year by year, it gives some context for the numbers and for the data, so they can see how things have changed, just even over the course of 12 months, if they wanted to see that. The next visual is attendance, and this is actually live. And it's current as of a week ago, so you can actually see what the attendance rate is for all of our schools. The graph that you see there, if you were to expand that, you can actually scroll up and down, but it shows you the daily attendance rate. And then also the state says we're interested in how many of our students are attending at least 90% of the time. So that's why there are two different metrics that are there. Once again, you can drill down both by school name and also put in an emphasis as you look through the visuals on race and ethnicity, knowing that that's been a value for us to start to highlight some of the differences that we've noticed over time. We want to make sure that that data is out in front of our public. So the attendance piece is there. And once again, that updates usually every Monday as I pull that data off of the information servers that we have. There's a historical attendance trends as well on that particular page so that, again, people can see how is our attendance doing in comparison to where we've been in the past. If you keep scrolling down the page, graduation rates would be the next visual that you would see. And once again, zooming in large is how that would look if someone were to actually click on that page. You can filter both by different schools. In this case, it's looking at either Springwater Trail, Gresham High School or San Barlow. And then also gender and race and ethnicity are included on this one. That's been a key focus, both with Jane, gender and race slash ethnicity at our different high schools, which is why both of those are there as far as filters. And you'll see the same thing is true on the ninth grade on track, the same sort of filters are there. There is a piece with the graduation, in case people are interested, that looks at some historical trends at different subgroups. These are all ones that the state has published, and if any data is missing, it's because the subgroup there is too small for the state to actually publish the data or statistics. Usually it's a cell size of smaller than 20 individuals in that particular population. But once again, it's an opportunity for constituents to see how we're doing relative to various subgroups that they might be interested in tracking. The last things on the page are the state test indicators, and you'll see it's really small right now, but that red down below says that the state tests by and large were canceled for the 2019-20 school year. There is some data from the 1920 school year. Our high schools actually began testing right there at the end of January, beginning of February. So the data that's there is actually reflected from our high schools alone. So if you to use the filters and say, take a look at San Barlow or to say Gresham High School, you would see data for the 1920 school year. But if you're to actually drill down and click on schools and select one of our middle schools or elementaries, you'd see that there'd be no data for that 1920 box, but there would be data for 18 and 19. And that's true for both the language arts and also for the math tests. Like I said, both high schools were able to start that testing prior to the shutdown right around the middle of March.
Tim, you want to share that number?
The number of.
There was a very few, I mean, a minimal number of kids who took the test.
Oh, yeah, we're talking right around 300 students total between all of the high schools that tested in 1920.
Tim, and you said this is on our website, on the district website?
It's up and live. It's not, you're not able to find it yet, and that's why I'm working with IT to make it discoverable and also trying to put it in a place that's prominent. Right now I'm working with IT to get a dropdown for the research and assessment department, the one that I had in order to link this directly off of that, so people can find the information that's there. Next steps.
Yeah, we can use the slide. It is pretty amazing, Myra. You can click on it and it's taking you right there and I got to not go there.
I wanted to show it to my sister, so that's why I was looking on our website, but.
You will find that, like I said, some of the visuals will take a little bit of time because they're literally plowing through hundreds of thousands of data points and actually adjusting the data in real time. There were some things that I've been working with Jeff on the backside to make it a little faster. The next steps for us on the district side of things is to shift to Tableau, which is a much faster interface. There are some technical components that we need to work through with that. But this is the the stepping stone from no information that's public facing to a much faster, much more streamlined interface as we keep putting data in front of our constituents. So with that, like I said, all the links within this particular PowerPoint are live and you're welcome to take a look at what's there. This has been up for a couple of weeks and our district leadership team has had a chance to look at this. The instructional leadership team has been looking at it for about two weeks, giving feedback in terms of things that worked, things that were confusing. So as you guys are looking at it, if there are things as you're navigating through the visuals that are there, if something comes up that's confusing or doesn't make sense, let me know. Because I want to make sure that this is usable by the public and that the data that's there can be easily digested by the folks in our community. So with that, I know that we've got a pretty packed agenda, but I want to open it up. Are there any questions that you have around the key performance indicators?
Do you have any ideas of how principals are using any of this information for their work plans or to inform their goals for the year?
That's.
Um.
I can answer. Okay, I can answer some of that. So I've actually created one for the principals that has many more filters than what you see here, and it allows them to drill down specifically into subgroups and subpopulations that would get down to cell sizes of five to 10 students if they wanted. So based on the requests that principals have for me, they actually have access to this. It's not available on a webpage. It's available through a secure sharing function. But yes, principals are using this specifically as they're writing their continuous improvement plans or their school improvement plans to identify subgroups with needs and also to identify trends over time.
Thank you.
Chair Peterson.
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Per.
I just wanted to remind the board that this data, these data points are based on as we kicked off our new strategic planning and implementation of that last last fall. Of course, we haven't a full haven't had a full year of doing that. But nonetheless, I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that, those things. So again, we going to get that momentum to get a full year in. I think you'll see some different data as well.
All right, Chair Peterson, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Tim. This is really, really good information and I'm excited to have it at our fingertips. Thank you.
Absolutely. And it's going to get better and better. I mean, that's that's the goal, starting with with this as the start, but making it even more. I think visually appealing is one of the things that I would like to do, having just a numbers interface or numbers-based interface is a good start. The Google Data Studio has some excellent features, but some of the visualizations in terms of graphs and charts aren't what I would like them to be. So that's kind of the next piece as well as trying to present the data in a way that that's visually appealing beyond just kind of the hard numbers that are there. But thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right, our next agenda item is an information update, return to learn update. This was a late addition to the agenda. There is a there's an attachment within this agenda item that is publicly available. And this one has Lisa Riggs's name on it, but Dr. Per, do you want to introduce it or?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that it was a late entry because we had some new regulations that came out, guidelines, I should say, yesterday, and we wanted to make sure the board was aware of some things that that we could make some changes in. Actually, I thought John was presenting, but Lisa.
We decided to tag team, so thank you, Dr. Ferrer and board. A few things that we need to share. Yes, we've had some updates and then we also have had some key communicator meetings with these questions. And and when there is a change, that's why we've seen like every time we meet, we are sharing the the metrics and the updates. And so that kind of is something that we have to do. And as soon as we take it off the agenda, guess what? We have to put it back on. So what I will say is I will share my screen one last time just to provide you the one page that we have. And then John will probably speak here at the same time. I need to find the, sorry, I got to move you guys. Apologize, I think it's this. All right. Hopefully it'll open. All right, um, this is I guess that's as big as it's going to get. Okay, here, this is what we placed in and then John and I can speak to this is that a lot of people are just looking at what is our timeline and are we ready to return if a hybrid is at all possible in in our county? And the answer is yes, John is and his team and his response team is ensuring that we are ready and that we are able to make those adjustments if and when the time comes. So we put together a timeline, knowing that the first, if we were given a chance, we would be looking at the first week of January. And at that point, staff would return and prep for a hybrid approach. And that would be both K five and six 12. We do have here as an example, again, this is just an example where students would return for a one-day practice, but what we know is that we have talked to our community and to you as as rolling this out in a phase by phase, which means that not all K five would start on one day and not all six 12 would start on one day, but we would be starting in the weeks ahead of the of January 8th. We also wanted to explain that there are two choices. We have choices, but there are two things that we're working on. And that is students returning in that hybrid approach with a group A and a group B. And then we also have what people are calling the LIPI, which is the limited in-person return, which is really about our most vulnerable students, some special ed, some English language learner, other students that may be experiencing failure that really need that interaction and engagement. And we would be moving into that as well. And then most important, another important piece, as you'll hear from our surveys, is that EGBSD will continue to stay in place, and that is what our students are experiencing now, where they could, they could continue online and not re-enter face-to-face or be part of a hybrid or a limited in-person return. That is, so we can give you an update of all the things we are doing behind the scenes that includes schedules and rolling things out, but we want people and our community and especially our board to know that we are prepared and ready in that, in that pivot. And then, John, why don't you share the, the recent updates that we received that include some of this and, and additional pieces? Thanks.
Added to what Lisa said, Chair. The, we're confident that if the metrics meet there, we can meet this, but I want the board to understand the nuances that people outside don't always understand. The transportation implications are huge in the planning that would go into a hybrid piece is substantial. The rebalancing of classes, depending on what parent choice is, is also going to be substantial. Kids will switch classes. We'll have to switch staff around to staff whatever option that we do. So the disruption necessary, the necessary disruption could be substantial because we do have to do all of that work, but we're ready and we're, we're starting some of that schedule work now. The safety stuff, the transportation stuff, the meal stuff, we believe we have in place pretty solidly. Now the real work of balancing classes and redistributing staff, if necessary, comes into play. Okay? There have been some athletic changes as well. The Oregon Health, and it didn't come from OSAA, the Oregon Health Authority weighed in on athletics. Let me give you a broad overview before I interpret the document that came yesterday. Prior to even the board meeting before, we had started to discuss, you know, how could we bring athletics back? So we had a, I had already asked to convene our team of athletic directors and activities directors, and we met for the first time last week, gave them some directions to come back to me with information this week. Jordan had already written a protocol that we could follow safety-wise that I put out to them. I wanted to know their answers on how do we engage students that may not be able to get to a school because they don't have transportation, could be taking care of kids? How do we address those students that don't have those means? Gave them a few other questions too from that lens. We'll start processing through those answers this week. The Oregon Health, or tomorrow, the Oregon Health Authority weighed in yesterday, six pages of information. Right now, what they're telling people is if you are in comprehensive distance learning, which we are, you can do training, conditioning, competition, and competition for outdoor, non-contact and minimal, medium, and minimal and medium contact sports. Training and conditioning for full contact is all that would be allowed, though. None of that can be indoors. It all has to be outdoors. And given what I'm seeing outside, that's not going to be a pleasant experience for people. The they are prohibiting school sports. Oh, I just said the indoors piece. They are hyper vigilant about the sanitation, sanitation of equipment, who does that and how, and that will be the responsibility of our coaches. They are also, and they will enforce and we will enforce mask-wearing and all the other social distancing guidelines that we need to do. The, they have, although we, I don't anticipate events at this point because the season, one, season two hasn't started, that's December 31st. And two, I'm wondering what OSA will say, given the metrics of where they are. But assuming that a season does start and we do have competitions outside, it'll be limited to 50 people. We'll have the social distancing piece in place, and we'll have to have people monitoring that. I think I have covered the highlights of the six pages of entertainment.
What have you, either Lisa or John, what have you seen so far in the survey that was sent out recently?
Lisa, if you want me to, I can speak to that.
Go ahead. We, we got the results today.
Yep. What we're seeing from the initial results in the survey, the last time I checked with Tim, we had 6,000 students represented, which is a strong response. We have 10,200 students enrolled, so we'll need more eventually. It gives us a lot to work with. About a third of the families are electing to stay in EGBSD, obviously two-thirds wanting to elect to the hybrid piece. Many do want information, and this was kind of that chicken and the egg conversation of we need information to make decisions. You want more information to make decisions. So it was really a, a tough survey to give out because we needed to get started somewhere. But 6,000 is a great response. We, we've, according to the survey, about 40% of our students would want to ride the bus. 60% say they will find another way. That's a safety piece, I'm sure. I didn't break that out by level yet, so I'm giving you broad numbers, K12, but we will. And I think that answers the question, unless you had another one.
No, I, I, I was just curious to see if you had seen any trends yet, but if you're gonna present on that, once you play around with the numbers, I can wait.
Will do. Other questions?
Um, just, just to clarify, so we are bringing back sports, but they're only going to be outdoors?
We are bringing back training and conditioning in a limited deal. The actual sports seasons haven't started yet. And let's put it this way, we have gotten permission to do that. Now we need to plan to make that happen.
Okay. I'm just a little scared because my mom, she lives out in Michigan, and the town in Michigan that she lives in, they let sports happen again, and they already have like 19 cases in their school district just from the sports, so.
My sister in Ohio has a similar experience at the high school that her kids go to. That's why it's incumbent upon us to make sure, no matter what, that we're following those guidelines for social distancing, mask-wearing, et cetera. Because that's where the real safety is, and we need to make sure that happens.
And one of the reasons why we also brought this to your attention is to give you the update and give you the update on the sports and athletics and those pieces because it is a community interest. But it's also because our next timeline, although I showed you a timeline, was that we are, we were saying that we would discuss and return with the next steps in the, this, at this timeframe. It was mid-November. And so John, or we can all speak to it, that we know where our metrics are. We had over 1,200 cases today, higher deaths today than ever, which is so difficult to see and continue. And, and John has been sharing those metrics and showing, and, and, and here's another sad fact. Tim keeps having to change the metric numbers, so it actually reaches the numbers that we're hitting. So we are, we know that we cannot make a, a change right now for in-person or hybrid. And we know that we have to share that and need to share it with the board first, and then to our community. So with that, I think that we're safe to say that the next step would be obviously after our different winter breaks and knowing that that takes us nearly to January.
Chair Peterson, we also received communication yesterday from Oregon Health Authority about the limited in-person, and that if we had not started it, they strongly advise us not to until further notice. So we were, again, it wasn't just going to be sports conditioning. We're also looking at some limited in-person. But unfortunately, we received that information yesterday as well in a different document that asked us not to, if we have not. And I know our risk manager there, Jordan's in the background, wanting to say something about all of this, but again, I just wanted to make sure the board understood that we were looking at both. But now all we can do is outdoor, and that's just training. It's not competition by any means. It's running, sprints, the part that I hated about sports, but.
Chair Peterson, I had a question about the timeline.
Go ahead.
Mostly it's, I appreciate seeing the timeline. On the 612 line, if there's some way that some of that sentence, I know what it's saying, but the fact that it's dead center in the middle of the page, and it says that limited in-person return, some sped ELL and kids who are failing. And boy, if your mind doesn't just go to sped and EL and failure all into one group. And so if there's some other way to say that, and especially not have it be right dead center in the middle of the page, it, to me, just stands out, and I hate saying that kids are failing in any way. And if there's just some other way that, that that could be presented, students that need additional support, it's kind of a different way of saying it, but I just don't really like right now the word failure.
Agreed.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you, Lisa. John, I don't know why I gave you such formality there. I gave Mr. Cook.
I've been called worse, Chair.
All right. Thanks for the update. Okay, now we move forward into discussion items. First up is Board Operating Agreement. So the Board Operating Agreement Committee, which is the new committee that's here, met on Monday, November 9th, to discuss the Board Operating Agreement. Utilize the Board Operating Protocol adopted at the November 1st, 2018 Board Business Meeting, along with the previous Board and Superintendent Working Agreements to develop an updated Board Operating Agreement. Time's been set aside on the agenda for the Board to review the operating agreement and discuss any additional changes or updates that may need to be made for the benefit of the conversation, maybe. You know, by policy, the Board, the Board doesn't have a lot of self-governance except through policy, and we do have a policy that says we're gonna abide by operating agreements. It, it's what allows us to function well with the district leadership team, specifically through our one employee, Dr. Perera, and, and with each other. And so this is long overdue, but every year by policy, we have to review this document. So this year I had asked Chris Howard and Myra Gomez to review those for us and kind of present a, a starting place for us, and I think they've done an outstanding job. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to one of you, Myra. Myra, I think I saw most communication from you. Would you mind introducing what's in front of us?
Yeah, so we have, looking back at our, at the attachment, so you can see that we have a Board and Superintendent Working Agreements. And input is appreciated. So the revisions that we made or suggested, the first one is on that page one. And to add to number one, establish, refine, and review annually a long-term vision for the district through the district's equity lens. Since we know we have an equity lens now, we thought we could add that last phrase to, to number one under the purpose. We didn't do the cool thing that the policy committee does, Chris, where they have, you know, the red and the additions and all of that. I just took notes on a regular doc.
Yeah, I think, I think you got the, the things on there, you know, on that first one, I think that was the only thing that was, was on there, and then you went on to the next page.
Page two, number nine and number 10, we thought of combining them so that it reads, while communication between the school board and district staff are encouraged, requests that require staff time and resources shall be communicated with the superintendent. Number nine, in that same page and page two. If a communication is a planned meeting between a board member and a staff member, advance notice to the superintendent is, is expected. And 10, the superintendent will communicate with all school board members, will communicate with all school, but all school members' requests and responses to requests that the superintendent is able to fulfill. And then on page five, we wanted, we suggested adding two, two more, a number nine and a number 10, because right now we only have eight. So adding a number nine would read, board reports should be related and relevant to district school business. And adding number 10, the board will use Robert's rules in conducting meetings because we already do that, but it's not in writing. Was there, um, did I miss anything, Chris?
Sorry, there's still one on page six that was in red that never got out of red about keeping current with email and respond promptly. And that was one, especially making sure when we got emails from Sarah to respond to those in a timely manner. If she's trying to gather information or, or a tally or account, so that just needs to come out of red. That's not anything we added that's been on there. It just didn't get updated.
Yeah, I think that just wasn't updated from a few years ago, so I will go in and update that. Thanks, Chris.
I conveniently forgot that one because I break that one all the time.
Me too, me too. And most of these come out of our existing policy. They came out of, and part of it was trying to get to where things that have happened, you can see there's been updates to this over the years, 10 years ago, eight years ago, several years ago. And just trying to make it easier when especially new people come on board and having it in one place to see, how are we doing this? And a lot of it feels like common sense, but making sure that it just has that, that standard look to it and make things go a little bit smoother. So there wasn't a lot that we changed with it. And it was just verifying the information that we had in the policies already and, and how to make sure that, that we did our jobs efficiently and accurately and, and professionally.
This, Matt, I do like the fact that we add the number 10, but it is actually in policy on BDD for Robert's Road Order.
Yeah, I thought it was. Yeah, it is in policy.
Any other discussion about this?
I, you know, after the last meeting, you and I have had some conversation, Chair Peterson, about your role as spokesperson and communication. And I really haven't gotten clarification because my request, you know, for, so the board knows, was we received a lot of outreach, and I was just interested in having contact information so I could just thank people for participating, you know, not in any like official, like, hey, this is the board decision and this and that, but I was told I wasn't able to. And I was asking like, what was the reason around it? And then I was referred to these agreements. And I'm not really sure how those, these agreements right here prohibit me as a director in just communicating as a director with the community, with the community. And there's some things to be said about our working agreements. There's some things to be said about our policy, and then there's another thing to be said about our culture. And as a board, what are we just doing, right? Because if we are just saying our chair is responding 100% to every inquiry, that's not in our policy, but that could be in our culture. And I just wanted to get some clarification around that because it says, you know, speak for and about the board and describe boards' processes and positions. And then another one, act as spokesperson for board matters in the community, and then it says parent groups, media, et cetera. And so that seems like a forward-facing position, but what about that prohibits my ability to, to reach out and speak to people as a director?
Yep, I, I'm not. Perhaps it is a culture. You know, this, this issue has not come up in my three years on the board. Not that we haven't received public engagement, but it has always been deferred to the board chair to respond for unity of voice. I haven't been here as long as others, so I don't know if there's other insights into that.
Oh, go ahead, man.
I was gonna say, if you look at policy, BBAA, Individual Board Members Authorities and Responsibilities, I think that answers some of your questions, Robin. Now, in terms of, again, what Blake was indicating earlier, and you were saying earlier as well, you cannot act for the board. You cannot act for the board. Or you cannot talk for the board. You can talk for yourself, but not for the board. So what Blake chair is doing is talking for the board. Board's opinion. That's the biggest, that's the differentiation. You can talk to somebody about a subject as long as they know it's your opinion, not the board's opinion.
I have bad lag.
No, no, I was, I think I was gonna try to restate your position because honestly, I'm I'm. I care probably a lot less about this than you think I do. The specific request. Was Robin wanted to ask the board secretary for the list of all email addresses of anybody who submitted public comment. In order to. Dialogue with them or engage them. The board secretary referred that to. To Myron myself. And I consulted with the superintendent and I felt that I had responded. In fact. I didn't respond to many of the public comments because I referred them to the superintendent, which is also board practice and I believe stipulating policy. So the specific question is. Engaging with public comment. That it comes to us by email. And I imagine there's a lot of other expressions that would also apply to this conversation. We have the board operating agreements in front of us. If it's not governed by policy, we can deal with that conversation right now, how we want to behave as a board. And I'm I'm here to facilitate that conversation.
I think Chair Peterson. And I I don't have my finger on the policy, but. In this hybrid meeting environment that we're having. There is that implied access. With the people who are making the the public comments. If that same person came to. The previous format where we would be in the business meeting, we would have the public response to whatever they want to talk about. And they would give that information. The board does not engage in dialogue. And it's referred to the superintendent for further review because oftentimes we don't know what the back history is. We don't. You know, we don't know what it is they're going to bring forward. So it's an unusual scenario that we have what feels like this. Easy access. The potential downfall of that is. The community, and I say this very, 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 very carefully, the community is not always well versed in. Who? Who and how board members can speak. And so any of us that would take on replying to all of those. Would elevate that board member to a leadership position that maybe they don't have. And would also lend more weight to they've made a decision and it's not accurate and it's not true and it's not the intent of the board member. Board member just wants to engage with the community, but people don't see that. They really don't understand. That it's seven people and one of us doesn't make a decision. But the part that we have not engaged directly when there has been public testimony, our meetings are public. Our meetings are not public forums. And that's why we have other town halls, forums, other ways to communicate with folks, but that's not. In policy and in practice, not been how we. Have done things occasionally when there's been a hot topic, we have allowed for a larger forum at one of our meetings. But again, when people come and give their public testimony, it's not with the expectation that we're going to engage in conversation. And so engaging in conversation via email. Is the same as engaging with them at the public meeting, which is not what we do. So you don't get trapped into something that you. They feel like you've promised you're going to fix something. You're going to bring back sports. You're going to bring back school. You're going to bring back. Outdoor school, whatever it is you're going to do. And so it's it's a careful balance of that, but. We don't, by policy and by practice, we don't respond. As an individual, when someone speaks to the board. On a board topic. So that's just the the direction that we've been given in the past to not. To not cross that line and wind up getting in trouble. And you didn't mean to, you meant to to engage with the community, but the community doesn't understand your role.
Personally, I think that this is very limiting. For me and my career and my values, I value community engagement and I really appreciate. When people are able to reach out and I do appreciate having the opportunity to continue certain discussions, to be able to further understand what people are going through. To be able to, you know, just thank people for their engagement and and really encourage more of that. We don't have any of that, right? If I I really think our restrictive community engagement policies are are way too restrictive. I do think that this is something that's really important for us to really fully understand about people's experience in the community. Personally, and I don't even have to say personally, as board members, all of us, we do have. We've read the policy and we know as individuals, we don't speak for the board. I am not trying to speak in the capacity at all as a spokesperson. I am not trying to speak in in any capacity as the board. This is just an opportunity to fully understand more of what community members are going through so that we are able to make better decisions on. On the directions that we provide our guidance, you know, and if we if we can't talk to staff, we can't talk to people who make public comment. We can't talk to XYZ. It's just like, well, how how are we being informed to a certain point? And, you know, if I wanted to say, you know, oh, thank you, you know, what what is your experience with this? Or could you tell me a bit more about this? And like, I think that for me, that that would help me fully understand. What the issue is and then to be able to strategize with the board, you know, that that with that information. To come up with better responses and and have better discussions about what the issue is.
So there's two, there's two matters that play. There's the public comment portion and then there's the regular interactions with the board portion because. Whether or not we're in a virtual setting, we do receive emails as individual board members and as. And collectively from time to time, also all of our personal phone numbers are on the district website, spoiler alert. And people can call us, they can walk into Chris's store, which they do and talk to her about board business. I certainly interact with a number of other families who are have kids in the district in my day to day life. I think that's part of representative. Leadership is we're in the community. And engaging in those conversations in our in our day to day. That's why people have entrusted us into these positions. And if we don't do well at it, then they will. No longer trust us in these positions. I I think the matter before the board. Is. Public comments. Because I I disagree that we're that restrictive on engaging with staff. We're just talking about the process. So it's working through the superintendent in order to access the staff, not working directly. And it's the superintendent and these operating agreements, if I read them correctly. The superintendent providing whatever answer they that her staff provided to that board member, providing it to the board broadly. I, that's how I see the operating agreement. If if I'm misreading that, then I'd look for my colleagues on the board to say otherwise.
I think the matter of the staff, we've always had that go through the superintendent primarily because she knows the load leveling of those. Individual staff members. And so I don't see where there's an issue with that. Going to the superintendent. And by missing something on that part?
Well, I'm afraid I'm mischaracterizing, particularly Robin, I'm afraid I'm mischaracterizing your your comments. So. As it relates to the superintendent and or not having access to staff. I don't think that's found in the operating agreements, but I'm.
I'm just saying, for example, I'm not going to the schools or like, you know. Having direct access with with teachers, with counselors, for example, in order, I think that might be appropriate. But, you know, I'm saying that these individuals that are coming to us right now in this public forum and we do have access to like engage in conversations that they. Want to be engaged in, that this is an opportunity that would help that person feel, you know, heard, engaged and will help us better understand as. Individual directors, what the issue are, what the issues are if we choose to reach out. So when I say I don't have direct access, you know, that's just through. You know, I don't work in the school, you know, I don't work in a school and, you know, to be able to go and to have, you know, to forge that relationship and so forth. Is going to be very different than a person who's coming to us and telling us, you know, about an issue that they're having for us to engage in a conversation with. So. Yeah, I didn't mean it in that way.
Thank you for that clarification. And and again, I didn't mean to misrepresent anything you said. Okay. I I feel like this is an issue that deserves resolution either today or or at a future meeting. Public comments, how do you want me or whoever succeeds me as chair? To deal with in a remote environment. I don't know that we need an amendment to it to. Talk about virtual environments, but how do you want me to behave board? And then I'll take my marching orders.
Have a policy. Chair Peterson.
I I understand we have a policy. I think the.
KBCB.
Which is.
You can designate others to speak on behalf of the board at your discretion. So this may be a case where you say, or the chair says. Whoever has more time with. Parameters of again, making sure that the person that is receiving the communication does not feel like they're receiving. Information or a promise or a direction that it's a gathering of information. And it's presenting and says, yes, the board heard, the board saw, the board looked at. And thank you. And that's about it. But the chair can do that. It's right there in KBCB. The chair can say, okay, Robin, guess what? Those 12,000 emails, you're on it. And then being very careful not to reply to those in a way that someone would misconstrue. And also being careful as we set that up. That again, people will send an email to you and you think you're the only one that you received. And they've also sent it to me and they're looking for a different answer from me and they're trying to get a different different perspective from it. Only they're trying to get a different response from it. And so I do get a little bit concerned, but being designated by the chair is an option. Because there's a lot of work that the chair does and the chair can designate to the vice chair, to other board members. And say, this is what I would like for you to do during this time. And it doesn't mean that when we get back to in person meetings that we would. Respond during the meeting to what was going on. It would be follow up or follow up by the superintendent, but not. They're not public forums, they're public meetings.
I'm I'm not interested in taking the role of chair and responding in that way. I am interested in communicating as a director. And and getting to know the community. So so those are two different things. I don't have a problem with, you know, the chair responding. I don't have a problem with the. Superintendent responding. However, I would like to be, whether that's a document of. You know, these are the responses, you know, when staff responds or when the chair responds. If that's my response, I want to know, right? If that's our response, I would like to know exactly how it's worded and in what. We are saying to the public. So I I would like to be informed of that, but I don't have an issue with staff or the superintendent responding. I don't have an issue with the chair responding. My comment was like, well, can I have access, I guess, to these? This contact information for people who make public contact to engage as an individual director. And this is, it's not written in policy anywhere. This has been a cultural, a board cultural issue that we've just deferred everything to the chair. But now I'm going back and saying, you know, is that something that the board would be interested? Could I have access to that? And if the board just says, no, then. That's the.
Robin, and I I agree with you in in wanting to get to know the community because that's. I mean, that's the fun part of being on the board, right? Like you get to know the community and get to see kids and all of that. So you, I mean, you can visit schools. And you can talk to staff when you visit schools to just let the superintendent know and the principals know that you're going to go visit and and you can go visit. Or you can be like, I guess, speaker in a class or, you know, attend staff meetings. I've done that too. So you can, you can engage with. The school community directly without. Without everyone else. So I know it's hard right now, but.
But but from from my from my perspective, you know, as a community outreach engagement specialist, when you have people who are already here who. Want to be engaged, who have written in the process, who are already part of this, a big, that's a huge asset. And I just don't want to let that go. So yes, you know, going and doing, I guess, cold calls to schools, introducing yourself to students and teachers. That is an opportunity. However, this is a group of individuals who who are engaged, who are part of this process. That I, you know, would find that further conversations might be very enlightening. I do understand that there's other options in getting community engagement, but I'm speaking particularly on this process.
If if I could just jump in real quick, I I think at the heart of it and I, Chris, I appreciate you actually kind of. Helping it click for me, the heart of this issue, because none of what you're asking. Or what you asked wrong would be. You wouldn't need that in a public, in a in in a non COVID environment. You know, when when we have. People provide public comment, we typically have a recess somewhere around there and you go and you introduce yourself and you say. Hi, thank you for coming. I'm so grateful that you, you know, spoke up. And if you need anything, give me a call. I'd love to know what what you're saying more and I I. Yeah, at the heart of this is just the clunkiness of virtual meetings. Honestly, I think that wouldn't solve all of our problems. But it'd certainly solve a big one. So.
Matt, I interrupted you earlier. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just, this this unfortunately, this conversation is kind of weaving all over the place. So we have like through almost three different topics we're talking about. But going back to Blake's direct conversation a moment ago regarding public comment during a meeting. And the difficulties on the virtual environment, I'm not sure why we can't. So. Like our last meeting, we had a tremendous amount of comments and unfortunately, we couldn't take them. Normally, what we would have done in a case like that, we would have looked at each one of those items and said, okay, there's five of these folks. Have the same topic, three of them have another topic and one has another. So let's have three people talk, one on each. Comment or one topic. And so that way you're not having. Nine people talk, you have three people talk. So you you're not taking hours on a meeting when you can take 15 minutes, which is really what's allocated for that. So is there any way in the virtual environment where we can allow the public comment? Because we already have that those comments, correct? Or aren't they submitting something prior to the meeting like they would in a regular setting?
No, that that's correct.
And and so then what we would end up doing is. You as chair can say, maybe there's a box they check or something, say, hey, I'm willing to talk on camera. And then Sarah can unlock that person when it's time for them to to speak. So again, I again, I don't understand. Maybe I'm not being clear on my, the the process, but I think there's an opportunity for public comment in the virtual environment. Because they're listening, they're on, they have a camera or they have a phone. No, I'm not saying everybody. It's kind of like grouping it like we did, you know, something to think about.
Yeah, we we. I met shortly thereafter with with Myra and the superintendent to express that I that was. That was something I had wished I'd handled differently and in inviting that. Personal touch of somebody expressing their public comment. We talked through the logistics. It is possible. That is how we'll move forward with it. But.
So I don't know if if Robin knows that. After public, after public comments, like somebody from our leadership team follows up with with that family or with that comment. But I'm also wondering, yeah, because of the virtual setting that we have right now, we don't get to. Talk to people during that break that we normally take after public. Talk to people during that break that we normally take after public comment. So is there a work around that or? If there, this is the first time that we've had such high, such a volume of, of requests for public comments since we started virtual meetings. So do we hold? Our own listening sessions, like does the board hold their own listening sessions to allow? The community to talk directly to us and for us to listen or. I, I'm just trying to think of how we can go around, around that so that we do still have that opportunity.
I have a question, Blake. On the, the last meeting, was the chat function open outside of the? Public testimony piece? So people were making comments during other. Agenda items and that confused things a little bit as well because we're not in a two-way communication with people during every single. Agenda item. That's why we have a public testimony part and it's not supposed to be throughout the meeting. So was that something that happened and wasn't supposed to happen?
Yeah, this is the, is my confessional. Is that what you're asking for, Chris?
I was flipping it to Sarah because Sarah's great and Sarah would, would fix it, but.
No, you know, in fact, I, I put true confession, I put Sarah in a very tough spot there because our chat is typically disabled. For that exact reason, because of that two-way street. We've hosted other district events where we, that is a two-way chat feature that works really well. But for the reason that you stated earlier, it being a public meeting, not a public forum. We had taken the practice of disabling the chat. The chat was active. However. Initially, I saw it as active, it was disabled and then reactivated when I. Put Sarah in that position. So. No, by typical practice, the chat should not be enabled during a public meeting. Because we've asked public comments to be submitted beforehand by email. Myra asked a question as well. Before you had. Asking about whether we want to host a board listening session. With any, with any regularity or are you thinking?
Do we ever do that and do, or should we during this, this time that we can't?
The only times I recall that we've done that kind of thing has been primarily around. On conversation about improvements to the buildings, about things of that nature. And Matt, is that kind of what you recall that when we would have the forums, we'd go talk to PTCs? And other things would come up, but the introduction was to come in and talk about the improvements to the learning space.
So is this, so is the current situation we're in something that. That, that would, that would benefit us of having. Visiting session like you did for the bond?
What would we learn that wouldn't be operations?
True.
You know, I don't, I think I'm totally up to. Leadership and something like that. But typically when we were going to PTCs or. Doing listening sessions like that, it was usually one or two, two or three board members that would go. So it wasn't the whole board.
That would mean we're having a meeting, correct? Isn't that what that means, Chris?
That exactly.
Have a quorum, right? So we would do three.
Never had a quorum, so we were not having an actual meetings where decisions could be made.
Right. Someone couldn't ask us a question and four of us would say, sure. And then we just agreed to do something.
Right. So that, that would be the concern that you would have on a listening session is if you have a quorum.
Okay, I'm gonna. I'm gonna move through that part. That's, that's a task on. Myra, I think you and I might present some options to the board. With Sarah's advisement about what the technological limitations might be to facilitate those. What I have in mind is that we, what I'd like to see us do is provide board members the technical resource. And limited district staff requirement. So it will work through the superintendent. Basically, I'm talking about Sarah. To be able to provide digital listening sessions. We're going to figure out maybe how, how we facilitate that process. And in so doing, retain the board business meeting as a true business meeting. Which is in person, just as clunky as far as the interaction between the board and the public. As far as coming to resolution because. For all the reasons we've already said, and I won't revisit them. So. I, I, that point's well taken, Myra. I think we can explore some opportunities for the board.
But only the rest of the board is interested because.
Sure. I, I think, yeah, and I don't think we're making that decision today is the short of it. I think we owe more clarity on what that might look like. And so I'll, I'll engage in that conversation with you and superintendent.
I'm very interested in you guys pursuing that conversation. Thank you.
I don't mean to backtrack a little bit, but I was just kind of thinking, so like, we had 18 public comments and they were mostly just about, you know, schools reopening. Totally normal, you know, people are frustrated and they want to talk to the board and everything. So. I was thinking that like, if we get that volume, that, you know, a volume like that of complaints on one specific topic. Just to make everybody's lives easier, like the teachers, the administrators and every, everything, like, could we just all just collectively just write a statement about the issue that they feel? And then just let them know that it is what it is.
If, if that's what the, yeah, if, if we come to a consensus as a board statement, sure. I'm not going to speak on. Which you're not, you weren't asking me to, so I, I don't need to say it. If, if the board wants to make a collective statement. In, in those situations, sure.
I, because I'm just. Would be really important. Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, because no, I just, whenever I talk to the public or anything, like if they have any problems or anything, I'm like, hey, you know, just email the board. And this was like when I was like newer. And they would just say like, no, that doesn't do anything. That's crap. It doesn't do anything. They, I never get a response. It's like a brick wall or something. So I understand that frustration that people want to go through the process. And then, you know, like we'll get, you know, some people are saying like, you don't speak on behalf of the board and. You know, it's not like we're really trying to speak on behalf of the board. We're just trying to, you know, help with constituents and their reasonable grievances, you know.
Yeah. Under, understood. I understand what you're saying. And. So. I think the best way to do that is. Somehow that conversation has to happen within the board. And I, I would just say, if you're inclined toward that statement, send it to me. I hope I'm not a brick wall in those situations. And I can try to facilitate that conversation for the board. I can get it on an immediate agenda, which I think we've done in the past. In fact, I'd, I'd make note that once we saw the volume of public comments, we did not have an agenda item that was dealing with return to learn for that business meeting and we added it. And I appreciate the district leadership team being super accommodating of us, asking them to deliver that. Because of, because of the interest. So it's not for lack of trying. It's, it's figuring out what the best execution is, particularly in a virtual environment, but not exclusively. Now. That is all about public comments and public meetings, which the board operating agreement does tend to. And it sounds like we're, we're sorting through the particulars. And I don't know that we resolved everything, but we'll work toward that resolution. That said, we have a board operating agreement draft in front of us and. We. At some point, I, I think it should take board action to approve the board operating agreement because we asked for that in policy. That doesn't have to be today. But if there's interest, then we can.
Yeah, I would encourage everybody to read it. I know that this was when I met with Chris, was the first time I was seeing it. I don't know, Amanda, if you have seen it before this.
Yeah. It was sent back in July. I remember some blame because I spoke on behalf of the board against racism. So.
Until, until I read it with Chris. So. Yeah, if I would encourage everybody to read it, even if it's a review.
I, I did have a possible amendment. We have on there.
Right now, Robin. Like, write it off.
Really quick. But we have on there like, you know, like saying that we will respond in a timely manner. To staff requests or to, to read and so forth. But also I don't know if we could put that, you know, for staff to respond in a timely manner to some of our requests. I know that we are still waiting on certain information or I'm still waiting on certain information. That has been requested like over a month ago. And if that's going to be an expectation of us and we're going to outline it, I think it should vice versa be an expectation of staff as well.
I think we're also delinquent on safe schools training. So if it's going to be a two-way screen, it needs to start with us.
I'm done with mine.
So Blake, are you outing yourself? Are you the only one that's not done?
Nope, I'm not outing anybody. I will say that we're non-compliant as a board. And if you've received numerous emails from district staff telling you to get it done, then you should get it done.
What does that have to do with this? And like the request for timing?
It has to do that you're asking the district leadership team to be held to a standard that you're not holding yourself to right now.
I think that this is really just. And you need to refer to our superintendent working agreements, Blake. Thank you.
Okay. Review the board operating agreements. We'll talk about in December.
Yeah. And Robin, if you can email that, your suggestion, that'd be great.
We have community outreach process for SRO feedback, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Chair. Sarah, were you going to present this or did you want me to?
If you can share, that's helpful. Or if you can share, that would be helpful for me. So I'm taking notes.
I will try to present. I just don't remember how to do it in Zoom. I know you guys have this as part of your board packet as well.
John, there isn't, there's not an attachment with a.
Oh, there isn't. Oh, I should, oh, and that got missed. I shared it earlier in the week. Let me. You want to give me a quick tutorial on Zoom on how I share my screen so you can.
Go the green, do you have the green button?
It says share screen.
Share screen.
Yeah, you kind of click at the bottom and it pops up at the bottom.
I'm really glad I could ask. Thank you all for your help. Can everybody see my screen now? Okay. On September 17th, we did a promise that we would. Generate an outreach plan to the community. This is that outreach plan, the engagement plan. Groups that we will reach out to are 10th to 12th grade students. They have experience with SROs, ninth grade doesn't, and we don't have SROs in middle schools. Our district administrators, district classified and licensed staff members and parents and guardians. Most of that will be done separately. Well, they'll be done separately in groups, but all at the same time. And I'll explain what that means in just a minute. Thought exchange is a new tool that we have in the district. It, it, it enables us to very efficiently and easily gather demographic data needed to break down answers. It eliminates. Dominant voices and conversations because people can engage on their schedule at their timeframe equally with everyone else. It facilitates that equitable voice when you are in a live session, even with hundreds of people, because people are just looking and commenting on other people's thoughts, starting whether they like them or not. And it's flexible because participants can do it 24/7 whenever we open the window, which we plan on opening the window for five days, beginning December 7th, if that's the Monday of that week. I can't remember for sure. The engagement process for students and staff. We're going to make sure that all of those students can be involved by going to their advisory, not going to their advisory classes, sending this link to their advisory classes, giving them directions and then giving them time to participate. Staff and administrators will be similar. We'll send it out so they can have it in a staff meeting and that would be voluntary for staff to participate in. We wouldn't mandate that, same with the administrators. And I did have the date right, December 7th, that week. We will do a virtual town hall, December 9th, with parents and guardians. And the process that I described to you with thought exchange is the one that will be used. We'll get several survey questions answered, the demographic data and some other things, their experience with SROs. And then there'll be a question for people to generate and comment on so that we can get a feel for where the community is. After that, we'll compile the data and bring it back to the board. I imagine, given that we're reaching out to every parent and about. 2,500 students and 1,000 staff. We could have anywhere from 500 participants to 5,000 participants, depending on how many people want to, and the system can handle that. But I, the reason I say that is that could take a while to compile that data and get it back to you. But it will be shared with district staff as well and we'll make the results available to the community. Thoughts for me?
Are you working with any equity specialists on this?
What we did was model surveys that were done for other districts. And incorporated their thoughts and their work because it had been done. And we did it that way.
So no.
No. Although. Our Carla Gay, our executive director of innovations and partnerships, is somebody who I would consider very well-versed in the topic.
I just don't see this as centered on diversity, equity and inclusion.
If we can, that's why we'll be asking the demographic questions. If we can dissect that information, this way everybody has a voice. We see which groups respond in which way.
I would again encourage staff to seek guidance, diversity, equity and inclusion. Especially those with, who are specialists within racial disparities. We know with school resource officers, what demographics, what groups are most impacted. And so to really dive into it, take it seriously, be anti-racist. And go at and approach this in a way that it's very intentional, that not that we are just, in addition to answer, ask, having everyone asking the same questions. We are dividing them into subgroups that we are intentional and have a holistic approach when it comes to really looking at this program that we know impacts those communities.
Appreciate the input.
Yeah, building on, on what Robin said, I'm wondering of. The, like, not just using the online tool, but even having focus groups with parents. I know we had a listening session with staff, but I'm really curious to know what, what parents of BIPOC students would.
There is an option, once this is done, to do that, because then you can see what the different demographics are saying. Because we will be able to get that data out of there, Director Gomez. And then we could target and take it that much further.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm curious to do that, just to have a conversation, making sure that they understand the questions, that. The terms that we're using mean the same thing for them as they mean for the district. Yeah, I just, I, I really want to hear their thoughts.
Any other questions?
And that's, that's a focus group that I volunteer for, like if. If, if. It wouldn't violate any confidentiality or anything. I'm happy to help co-facilitate that.
I don't think when, in a focus group that it would, Director Gomez. And this is set up so that we're not violating confidentiality either. People get to answer anonymously and not have to identify themselves, which also frees people up to speak more freely.
Before the survey is sent out or before.
I certainly can share that with you.
Thanks.
Chair Blake, did I hear?
John, could you say again what? Where you got this or who, what was, how was this process crafted?
It was crafted, I called Portland Publics, I can't remember his title, Jonathan Garcia, who facilitated their process. First, and he shared a bunch of. First, and he shared a bunch of research for me that he had done with that he had gotten from Toronto schools, Westlandville, Wilsonville, and then his process. And it was a melding of all three of those. It had a good, long conversation when it was very productive and helped design it.
Any other questions of John? The superintendent? Okay. Right, thank you.
With PowerPoint being put it in the agenda?
I would. I shared it with Sarah. It just got missed, so we can put that in, or I guess Sarah can.
We'll add it tonight, Robin. Sorry about that.
Okay, I thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next discussion item is strategic planning for future board agenda topics. This, so we've set aside some time to discuss upcoming agenda topics, board operations and meeting needs. The board is hoping to utilize this time for strategic planning to determine when specific topics will be discussed at future scheduled board meetings.
Do we have a spreadsheet, Sarah, of I know we were keeping one for a while at Google Doc that had. Request by board members of topics, and we used to plug in based on this calendar that we have here when certain things would most likely fit so that the information that was being gathered would fit within the timing of when the information would be relevant.
So we do have the board requests documents that I believe I shared out following our last board meeting. So that that is a document that all the board members have. Editing capabilities for that they can go in and add requests to it. I know at our strategic planning retreat last year, we had kind of utilized those request documents and actually placed it in month by month when those would be. So I don't know if that's something we need to look at doing as well, but we do have a board request that that just kind of has. The list of all the requests, but not necessarily the dates when they will be addressed by the board.
And when does contract bargaining start? Because there'll be times on the agendas when we'll have updates and conversation about those.
Derek, however, we are, we're hoping that we would get word from the GBA that we might start sometime in January, but at this point, they have not gotten back to us with dates. At this point, we're looking at February or March to start.
Chair, please, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Clarification. I know in the past, you know, I've had the conversations about the list that goes the the spreadsheet that board members putting things on there. There are times I think when items that are on there. Could be a session with an individual board member as opposed to an entire board. Topic. And so I really would like to be able to review those and. Reach out to the board members themselves and set up a time for them to speak with either myself or someone else in my office about those things. Again, I just want to make sure we have maximized and leveraging the time that you have as board. And if things are being presented one month and then two months later, we're asking for the same thing. That's not a good use of my staff's time. And so we really would prefer to do a smaller session.
That's a good idea.
And my team has a the instructional leadership team, DLT have put together a list of items that we know goes to the. ODE that we will. Have on our calendars throughout as well. So maybe something someone's requesting, but it's not due until, you know, another month out or two. And so again, to. Synchronize everything so we're not randomly scattered, especially in this day and age with all the other items that are doing. Again, I want to make sure. I'm using my staff effectively and officially on the things that we know are a priority right now.
Well, that's I appreciate that, Dr. Prera. I'm just reviewing this and we haven't kept the dates of when stuff is on updated. We had intended to get to health education, sex education at this meeting, but the agenda. Agenda and also the staff preparation pushed it to next month, so that will. Be on our mid month work session. Additionally. The bond update is coming to us at. I believe the business meeting in December. And we had talked specifically about disciplinary action. But I we talked about that. A few months ago, and what we're looking at there is when the data. Is updated is when we were going to provide that facilitate that conversation. That's also true of the ELL report update. That. So I'll work on updating that spreadsheet with Sarah.
Sarah, you said that we had access to this. It's not in my shared drive. Where is the the French?
I just I just searched board requests in my email because I'm still stuck in nineteen ninety eight as it relates to digital access of files, but. I do want to make sure that the whole board has access to it.
Like I did the same thing. And I'm not going to call myself old.
Who would? Who wouldn't choose the late nineties right now, Myra, you know, twenty twenty?
So Director Sowers, I did just reshare it with you. It's shared with the entire board, but sometimes it gets buried or may not come up. So I did just go in and reshare it. So hopefully you've got it.
There's some other lingering topics that I do need to get to. Requests from. Pretty pretty well rounded requests from the board, so. If. My words probably don't mean anything unless it hits an agenda, but I just want you to know that this is I review this on pretty close to a weekly basis. I just haven't updated the dates. To make sure that we're catching these on the agenda. I think Myra can attest to how I try to shuffle the agenda and. Organize it. To make sure we facilitate full conversations, but productive ones. So. As far as this agenda item. That's really. The limits of, I think, what would be productive tonight is just to say that's that's where we're. Picking out those board requests. We do have a strategic planning meeting, most likely coming in February as typical. Amanda, I see your hand.
Hi, no, I just wanted to do one more request before we move on. Like, I'm really excited. I'm going to do sex ed soon. Can we bring up a land acknowledgement too? Bring them to our schools.
It's so funny that you said that.
Why is that funny?
It was gonna. It was gonna hit that request sheet, whether you had brought it up or not, but I'm glad you did. So thanks, Amanda.
Okay, that makes me happy. Thank you.
See you. Great minds think alike.
So. We have a February strategic planning meeting. Usually what we look at there is budgetary focus. We try to keep the August one to calendar focus. COVID has really thrown both of those into into loop, but I would imagine that our conversation February will be. Oriented toward the budget. And I will work with Myra to sort that out. And the superintendent. Okay. All right, so for announcements. We have board work session December third. That will be virtual, so too will the regular board meeting. I imagine that also our work session in December, our second work session. Will be virtual because we'll be right on the limits of the Multnomah County restrictions. So I I think we're virtual for the rest of this year. But those are our two announcements. Are there any others that I'm missing from the leadership team? Not board related?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got distracted. What was the question?
Well, I was asking if if I was missing anything besides the board meetings, you know, sometimes there's. School or community events that are school related. Those aren't happening too much, so I would imagine the answer is no, but just to confirm. We don't have anything between now and December third.
Are we, Board Chair, are you still thinking of having that that meeting in person in the chambers or have you have you reconsidered? What's your thinking?
Which which meeting? The third?
December third.
I just think with the increased restrictions, I think it would be inappropriate for us to that's.
Yeah, I figured I just wanted to.
Yeah, I'd love to meet in person. I like it a lot better. So I. Is there another town hall that I could announce? Dr. Prera, I know we just got through one. When?
That's coming up the first week of December. I have the students on the second. And I lost the date of the town hall, but I'll give that to you before we end here. You can continue. Actually, it's the same day. Sorry, they're back to that in the students and then the community.
Yeah.
They're back.
You know, as far as the portions that I touch, Athena and your team have done an outstanding job of communicating that I've. We've we've gotten a lot of. Anyway, we've seen a lot of the information flow over the the town hall and the survey.
The next one will be. In two two languages, Spanish as well. Simultaneously, bilingual guests throughout. Karina will be there to.
That's the one I have on my calendar. I'll be there.
We had a good turnout last night. I would say about a hundred and what? I don't know. I forget the number.
Nice.
We had a great over a hundred, like hundred and thirty, forty.
It was about hundred thirty three, hundred thirty four.
Sarah, I think you were saying something.
So just a reminder for the board, you're free to attend the town hall. Just please let me know because I have to send out a quorum notice if there's going to be a quorum of the board there. I'm just to let the public know that a quorum will be there, but no decisions or board business will be taking place.
Sarah, I'll be at the one on December second.
Thank you, Director Gomez.
All right, then there being no other business before the board, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.